So, I just wanted to say a little bit of an introduction regarding the committee's charge. We've had a little bit of confusion about it. The school board set up the facilities committee. David's job, basically, is to create a permanent plan for a renovation plan. And in the charge, we said it would be important to prioritize these and to give us renovation plans at different price points. I feel very good because we're doing what the community has asked us to do, which is for the school district to consider and develop a renovation plan. Now, this doesn't mean this is what the school district will ultimately do, but we need that as a comparison. That's what the community has asked for. And I also want to say I feel really encouraged as we begin to refine costs provided by the maintenance plan advisor and consider the draft drawings developed by our architect, that we're really getting into the meat of the issue now. I did want to say the drawings are responding to what the principals and the administration have requested. It's not a plan that was put together by this committee or by the school board. So, I say this because we also will need to consider costs and what the community will support. We're going to start out by hearing from our architect, Mike Richly. He's going to go over his plan. And then we will have questions, comments from the table, and then I will take questions and comments from the citizens. I ask that everybody who speaks, including the people at the table, first time you speak, to introduce yourself, because I know people don't know each other that well. And if you're on the committee, in one sentence, say why you're on the committee. And that's it. And there's already a question?
I know, sorry, Judith. It's just really hard to hear.
Okay.
If everybody could just project their voice as best possible. I know we've turned on the fan and that helps a lot, but yeah, I don't know. I'm struggling.
All right. Put your hand up if you notice you're having trouble hearing, and we'll try to do better. Okay? I'll try to keep an eye out. Okay, Mike?
Great, thank you. Can I share my screen?
Yes. So, Judith, we're moving with point two. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. I don't have the agenda for us. I'm sorry. Okay. So, let's start with, Jay just wanted to make sure that we...
Yeah. So, this is something that was in the charge, and I think the committee is all there, but I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and that we stated it for the public. One of the things that we were going to consider was renovations over time by using a permanent improvement and doing multiple projects over multiple years. And I believe that option has pretty much been ruled out because the needs are too great and too soon, and we're looking at a renovation project that addresses them in one large project. That doesn't mean that the project wouldn't be phased in, but it's one funding for one project as opposed to a permanent improvement and doing it over 10 years or more. So, is the committee all on the same page as far as that goes? Okay. So, that's all I really have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think, if I may add, just one comment. That means that the language that we had on the charge of the committee that called for a comprehensive permanent improvement plan, this is not really what we're doing anymore because we can't phase in with several fundings here.
So, this is Mike Richly, our architect.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Richly with Richly Architects. And so, I'm going to present a little bit of background on the timeline and process I went through, just to bring everyone up to speed. And then also walk through the renovation addition floor plan concept, and then walk through a budget to support that at multiple price points. So, first, I'd like to start, and I'm not going to read this slide, but I just want to walk through the process I went to get here. So, Moats Engineering was selected through an RFQ process to be the maintenance advisor for the district facilities committee meeting. And it was quickly understood by the group that while they do great engineering work, there's some educational adequacy pieces, there's some issues around security, student experience, quality of space, that really needs to be kind of a parallel process and worked at in projection with Mike's work. So, I was onboarded for that in the summer and started to look at helping to create a vision for what an addition renovation plan could look like. So, to get to that point, I first started meeting with the principals, listening sessions, clean sheet of paper, walked the building with them space by space, photographed and listened to what I heard their needs were. And then I responded to that with a kind of an issues drawing, a drawing that identifies constraints, issues around the existing buildings they have. And then I listened to kind of their vision of how fit we or what are things that could happen here to make improvements. And I came back with a first draft of additions renovation plan, met with the principals again, and we had a second work session, went through that, got some comments, and then made some revisions to that. That was then reported out directly to the committee. Then there was a parallel presentation directly to the school board with that same first draft. And then I've gone back, I lost my screen. I, the principals did a staff survey for some staff input to the plan, and they received a variety of input comments on that. So, we went back and did a third work session with the principals, say, okay, what are these issues? Do we need to incorporate and address, incorporate in the plan? Those were picked up, and the plans that you have tonight all kind of went through that process, that three-work session process with principal superintendent and getting staff input. So, now, it doesn't mean it's perfect. If this were to ever get approved and move into a formal design process, there's a lot more design and input that would need to be taken into account. However, for kind of where we are in the process of planning... So, anyway, that's background. If anyone wants to see the dates, the kind of timeline of exactly when all those meetings happened, it's up here on the screen. I developed existing floor plans of each of your schools, and this is your existing conditions at Mills Lawn Elementary. I'm going to just kind of work through this quickly because the committee has seen this before. If anyone wants to slow me down or ask a question, please do so. And then for Mills Lawn, this is the issues drawing I mentioned, where I kind of in red highlighted portions of the building that you did to be addressed, whether it was security issues, whether it was reconfiguration of space, the modulators, renovation of restrooms, et cetera. And then this is the existing high school floor plans, first floor, and then second floor and third floor in the lower right. And then same thing, an issues drawing, working around the school. And those all led up to these proposed renovation addition plans. The areas in yellow represent additions. This addition off the back of Mills Lawn is two music rooms and an art room. The second addition is a new kitchen. And there's a third small addition, which is an extension of the corridor, which helps some circulation in and around the library to classrooms. Areas shown in blue were recommended for deep renovation. And by deep renovation, I mean all envelope issues addressed, all systems addressed, and all finishes and all furniture addressed. And then the areas in gray, a good portion of those are the 2002 addition, and those are the portions of your building that are in the best shape. The area shown in gray are characterized as targeted systems improvements. So, we still need to address the entire envelope, we still need to address the systems. But these classrooms, if you've ever been into the new ones, don't need quite the level of work as the 1950s portion. There's also a drawing below, and I will add, the change that happened between 2.0 and 3.0 is in the 3.0 variation of this. The fourth, fifth, and third grade and flex classrooms around the media center were added into the deep renovation scope. And then beyond that, there were some, well, kind of minor space name designations, offices reconfiguration, just to help with some of the workload. And the second drawing I'll show you is the high school addition renovation plan. Again, the yellow represents additions. And on this side of the building, that would be a new office with a new secure vestibule, a new choir theater room, and a new band room. This option would require the demolition of the existing band room based on how far that addition goes out. And then over on the other side is the construction of new classrooms and the removal of the modular in this vision, the, what do they call the shoebox. And then the areas in blue again are recommended areas for deep renovation. Those include things like the kitchen, expansion of the kitchen, removal of the kiva, removal of the French classroom up here, and expanding the student serving area, moving up through the floors on the second floor, adding large group restrooms, which will help tremendously with the flow because the students are having to come all the way down to the first floor. Reconfiguration of the third floor, turning the tower into the middle school. And then one other thing I'll point out is the renovation and expansion of your large group restrooms here on the first floor, which are too small. So, those are some of the highlights. So, kind of what everyone's been waiting for is kind of the first round of the budget that considers this. And after discussion with the committee, the direction we went was to try to provide a comprehensive and simple kind of one-sheet budget for the entire addition renovation plan vision, but also kind of bifurcated and have a, what we call a foundational plan, and then the balance required to do the whole thing. And the concept of this really came from the tour we did of Oakwood City Schools, which had a kind of a foundational approach, a more pragmatic approach, where they addressed envelope, systems, and deep renovation of restrooms. So, kind of targeted renovation. They called that a foundational plan, and that became kind of what was done there. The thought or the idea on a foundational plan is it can be built upon. Deep renovations can follow, additions can follow, but it's kind of the starting point or the genesis of the plan. So, when we talk about the numbers tonight, you'll see a column, that's a foundational plan cost. And then we'll have another column, which is additional work for the full renovation plan that you see in front of us tonight. So, I'm going to dive right into this. And this sheet is the 11 by 17 document. With any luck, I'll be able to zoom in on my computer for this. So, this is the one sheet, and the way this is organized is the Mills Lawn Elementary is in the blue up top, and Middle School High School is in the green below. And then you'll see the columns labeled foundational renovation plan. You can track those to the bottom and see subtotals per school. And you'll see the column that says additional work for the full renovation plan. You can see subtotals for those, and then the composite, the total of both in those schools and the grand total in the bottom right. So, with that, I would just like to go line by line through this and explain this. The drawings are also a companion piece to this, so as this relates to portions of the plan, I'll point those out for the committee. Line item number one, starting with Mills Lawn, is hazardous material abatement. And as part of this process, there was not an environmental engineer hired to look at that in detail. So, we relied on the 2001 OCC assessment report, where they came through and did an assessment of hazardous materials for both schools. So, this is the background for that. And the way we just assigned it for this proposal was we said 50% of the abatement would happen in the foundational plan, and 50% of the abatement would happen in the additional work piece. I will say that this is work that would need to be followed up on if a renovation plan was seriously considered, to see if 50% is probably not the right split. There's probably a more accurate split to say what type of abatement needs to happen in the foundation plan versus the future plan. However, I wanted to at least acknowledge that we need to get dollars in here for hazardous material abatement in this project. I have square footages for everything, which kind of helps on order of magnitude, so you could just see $5.53 for the entire Mills Lawn associated with that foundational piece. Also, item number two is the demolition of the modular. There seemed to be unity, not unity around everything, but definitely unity around that, that at Mills Lawn, that modular needs to be removed from the site. So, that was included. Here is item two in the foundational plan. And then item three was the THP envelope. And Michael, if you're all right, I will introduce this, but maybe let you talk through those numbers. You okay with that?
Sure. You can put them up here?
Yeah, I can. Actually, I can. I have it here. So, the THP report is on this double-sided, 11 by 17. And on one side is Mills Lawn, and on the other side is the Middle School High School. So, the backup for this item three is on the spreadsheet. And Mr. Murdock, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. So, my name is Mike Murdock, I'm with Moats Engineering, and I had responsibility to evaluate all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection, and structural engineering issues associated with the existing conditions. So, the spreadsheet you're looking at was generated by a consulting engineering firm out of Cincinnati. THP is the name of the firm, and they performed a thorough evaluation of the building for structural elements, envelope elements, so we're talking roofs and windows, doors, and the like there on the envelope, and then structural, all the concrete, columns, brick and mortar, anything that would be a structural element. So, when they went through here, they identified quantity of square feet and a cost per item, and identified a calculated total cost and how much that item would cost to repair. So, if you look at the very top, I know I'm looking at the, am I looking at Mills Lawn? Yeah, the elementary, Mills Lawn. If you look at the very top, he talks about concrete, the original construction concrete, 225 square feet. I'm not going to go through this whole list, but he breaks it down into 112 square feet for original, and then another 113 for classroom administration. And he identifies what he thinks the cost to do that is. He includes not just the unit cost, but general conditions. So, if a contractor comes in, he's got to set up a fence, he's got to clean up and move his tools, there's a profit, AE, that's architectural and engineering fees, and then inflation. So, we identified, we looked at all those costs, and we tried to break out what we thought was something that had to happen right away, had to be involved, had to occur in the next 12 months. That was either a safety condition or a structural element, and if it failed, it was going to cause a problem for the school's function. And then what could be delayed for one to three years, and then what could be delayed three to five years. Kind of broke them up into that bucket. And do we have that on here? Yeah, we do. So, on the far right, you see what we consider the first priority in the next 12 months, and that equates to $415,000 worth of repairs. And then the second priority is 12 to 36 months, that equates to $1.1 million. And then third priority, 36 to 60 months, is $2.8 million. So, structural elements, all these have to be addressed, in a renovation, they all have to be addressed. Some are more urgent than others. The one thing about a structural element, though, is you delay it, it gets worse and worse, and more expensive. At some point, if water gets into brick or block, and is allowed to freeze and thaw and destroy it. And so, we're at that point, in some cases, where we have some serious conditions that need to be addressed in the short term, in 12 months. You know, we also kind of prioritize these based on the reality that there's probably a renovation project coming. And if that renovation project occurs, some of these things would be delayed until you have a contractor, and then he would do a significant portion of the work in either first or second phase of the work. So, for example, roofing, you know, I wouldn't have you run out and patch the roof up in the next 12 months if you're going to tear it all off and replace it the next two years, right? So, it would be a function of what's the best use of the dollars, and to either delay if you have a renovation coming, or put things in a specific order so that you avoid any permanent damage. We evaluated this for both Mills Lawn, and then at the other side is the high school. I can talk about any specific issue, but the yellow highlighted, is the yellow highlighted Some of the items were highlighted, and we identified those. Some of the specific, maybe you took those out of there, the highlights, the, okay. We looked at certain conditions that may not be required if the shoebox is removed. So, there is certain items that are associated with the shoebox, and if it's demoed, you don't have to do those things. If you intend to keep it, then those costs are in there. So, we can isolate the shoebox costs, and so you understand the significance of that. So, if you want to go with any details, anything block or brick, columns, or roof, or armpits, or safety issues?
Are there, okay, so, at this point, are you going to go back to this list?
Items.
I mean, okay. So, there are going to be questions and comments, I'm sure, but if he thinks the best way to do it, should we keep going?
I promise you, keep going.
Yeah.
And then open it up.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mike. The way this was organized on this budget is the THP envelope items at 1.526 for Mills Lawn represent first priority and separate priority, or second priority columns in total. So, that the 1.5 million equals the sum total of Mills Lawn THP list, priority one and priority And then priority three is next door, which we'll get to in a second. The largest item is item number four, which I've called Moats Full System Replacement, $120.95 a square foot. And this also keys in below to kind of the backup of what makes up that 128. And again, Mike, do you want to just give us a quick point down to these items?
Sure. So, in the course of our role, we inspected all mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection, security, IT, AD, furniture, and room finishes, and identified what we considered equipment that needed to be replaced in timeframe. So, in our maintenance study, we have a list of like-for-like replacements. So, if your boiler goes out, we replace it with a boiler. If your pump goes out, we replace it with a pump. So, we identified that cost, but that doesn't get the building where it probably needs to be. So, this identifies essentially replacing all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection systems, or adding fire protection, fire alarm, and other systems in the building. So, this is a full replacement. HVAC system, to be determined, we wouldn't probably go back with the system that you have, we'd probably go back with a different, more efficient system. Controls, you don't really have controls, you have it spotty on some of the equipment. This would replace all the underground plumbing and storm piping, as well as all the toilets, all the handicap space, and completely new bathrooms. It would replace all your hot water, it would replace the grease trap and kitchen waste system, and add a fire suppression system to both buildings, including a fire pump and pump controls. We replace all the lighting, all the electrical distribution of power outlets, IT outlets, brand-new fire alarm, and then, you know, full technology. And then ceilings, and ceilings are in there. So, replacing all the ceiling tile. Because the work above ceiling would be so invasive, the ceiling tile, in most cases, would probably be destroyed. And a lot of the ceiling tile is the old hidden spline tile that you can't really take apart. This tile you could potentially take apart, stack the tile somewhere in the grid, and reassemble it if you wanted to. Typically, it's faster and easier and cheaper to replace them.
Thank you, Mike. So, that's item backup to Mills Lawn, that's item four at $128, nearly $128 a square foot. Next up in the foundational plan is an addition, and this one's listed as part one of three for the arts addition, and that's addition A on the art side. So, we flop over the drawings. This is addition A. In total, this addition is 5,480. But in the foundational plan, we're saying we would just add one art room and the associated corridor with it to replace, I'm sorry, one music room, to replace the music room that is lost in the demolition of the modular. Right? So, this foundational plan, we lose something, we get it back. And so, back to the budget, that's why this is broken out here, is arts addition A, part one of three, the instrumental room plus the corridor, 1,745 square feet, $450 a square foot. I will add that the schedule that we're conceiving is a fall of 23 bond issue, I believe, at the earliest. I know that hasn't been decided, but it's important for these numbers because that means our bid event would not be until 2024. So, here we're in late 2022, trying to predict construction costs of 24. So, $450 sounds really high, and it is. We've experienced incredible construction cost escalation. The States, which is kind of sets the standard, saw a 17% jump from 21 to 22. The states, which is kind of sets the standard, saw a seventeen percent jump from twenty-one to twenty-two. And the jury's still out about what's happening in twenty-two. So these additions unfortunately are getting more expensive. But the four hundred fifty dollars represents our best guess today of what this could cost in a 2024 bidding event. So that's a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for that first room. And I don't want to jump too far ahead, but the way we tried to break this budget out is I'm sure there's many in the room saying, well, how much would it cost if I just took another, did another music room or did another art room? So we separated these all out in hopefully such a way that allows the committee to make easy work of kind of determining their own scope or considering the cost of other parts and pieces. And the only other scope we have identified is in the K-two wing, a secure vestibule and the office and restroom renovation. And I'll point that out. So while the overall master plan envisioned, you know, a full renovation of everything on that east wing, what's proposed to be funded in the foundational plan is the creation of a new secure vestibule and a reconfiguration of all the office space required to support it. Secretarial area, reception area, where the principal's offices are positioned, some staffing reconfiguration to kind of bring the staff together. That's included. And then also the second piece that's included, which we really felt was foundational, is a full gut and replacement of the large group restrooms in that K-two wing. It's time and they really need it. And it felt like a foundational plan that didn't address that from our perspective would be missing the mark for certain. So when we go back to the budget here, you'll see fifty dollars a square foot applied to that entire blue area. Gives us approximately a million dollars to work with, which would be sufficient budget to do that entire office redo, creation of a secure vestibule and a gut and replacement of those restrooms. And so in total, that represents a total square footage of forty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-five square feet when we're done, because we're taking the existing building and we're adding on to it. It represents a just approximately two hundred dollar square foot investment into that building at about nine point seven million dollars. And then right next door is, and I'll just keep going here before I jump schools. This is again the column that says what additional monies would need to be invested to come up with this entire plan that's on paper. So back up to the top, we have the remaining fifty percent of the material, hazardous material abatement. Next item three, we have the priority three THP envelope issues. This one's at two point eight million dollars. And Mike, I believe this is a lot more expensive because the roofs are all. The roofs weren't immediately needing a replacement, but roofs are tucked into this one. The addition, part two and part three, that would be, part two of this addition would be creating, say, either the second music room or this could be an art room, kind of interchangeable. And then the part three would then be either that third art room or the music room. So that's where you see addition A, parts two of three and parts three of three showing up in this column. The storm shelter hardening. So the state had a state law that was a moratorium on storm shelters. Storm shelters are a requirement for educational facilities that house all the students and all the teachers and what they call an ICC five hundred compliant storm shelter designed to withstand that two hundred fifty mile an hour winds, if I'm correct, along with all their mechanical systems and structure to support it. In this proposal, I'm saying that until we build a sufficient amount of new construction to house the student population, there's really no way to get that storm shelter into that foundational phase. This is to be determined, would need to be discussed with the jurisdiction of authority to see if it's okay, to see where the storm shelter fits. But for today's discussion, I have the storm shelter at an added one hundred fifty dollars a square foot. So that's a hundred fifty dollars a square foot on top of the four hundred fifty dollars a square foot to build the buildings for the hardening. Structural hardening, campus systems hardening, the restrooms that you have to have out there, et cetera. So that's the storm shelter showing up there on the second phase. The kitchen addition shows up here as well as the kitchen equipment. And then that small corridor extension, what they're calling addition C, is also line item eleven. Line item twelve is the balance of the renovation of the K-two wing. So this would be going back through that wing. We had a wall we were removing to create an extended learning area. We are reprogramming and shuffling around some spaces. All new finishes, all new furniture in the K-two wing. And then also is on the three-five wing, a hundred fifty dollars a square foot in addition to the moats systems cost to do all the finishes, the case work, the flooring, the walls, furniture in those areas. We have a site work allowance, item fourteen of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that recognizes that if an addition is put on the back, that there's going to need to be some reconstructuring of the roadway because we have bus drop off back there, we have service entry. And that interferes with the footprint of the addition. So there's some site work allowance that just recognizes that we're going to need to deal and address with that revised vehicular drop off. And then the last item I will note up here is, it's shown blank, but it's called swing space. And this is another conversation. Swing space is an accommodation that needs to be considered in any renovation plan. The deeper the renovation, the more swing space is important. Some districts try to not lease modulators and utilize existing underutilized spaces and shuffle students around during a phased renovation. That's very typical. Or in other cases, we're bringing in and leasing modular units for, say, a year. So you could house a certain number of classrooms out in a modular unit and then cycle through the renovations quicker in the building. There's also discussions I've heard about off-site locations, different building locations that may come into play. So this is on the list to acknowledge that this isn't going to be zero. But determining what it is is going to take some work, either by understanding how deep the renovation scope is or understanding what kind of opportunities might be out there in Yellow Springs disso. So the second phase adds another a hundred ninety-three dollars a square foot. And the total is three hundred and seventy-three dollars a square foot. We're at twenty million dollar total on that building. And I know a lot of folks have asked, well, how much would a new building be? And the math is pretty easy. You could just use a four hundred fifty dollars square foot bigger for a new building. And you can see the renovation, even the total renovation should be south of the total cost of a new building, not including any kind of state credit. Sure. The total investment on this spreadsheet for all the work identified in the master plan, budgeted is three hundred and seventy-three dollars a square foot. If you were going to go build a new fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-five square feet today, if you were going to go build that same square footage in new at four hundred fifty dollars a square foot, my point was that would cost more than the full renovation.
Not including the swing space?
Not including the swing space and also not including a potential state credit if the district were participating in a state-funded program.
So all would come in.
Sure.
Once we get there.
Okay. All right, let's jump down to the middle school, high school. I might be able to go a little bit quicker because it's a similar format. But line item sixteen, hazardous material abatement, same thing. O C report at fifty percent, fifty percent in each of the buckets. The shoebox, which we call, in the foundational plan stays. It's not demolished. And the band room would stay in this foundational plan. The THP envelope options, or not options, but recommendations, which is, again, THP is list of their priority one and priority two items off their spreadsheet, is three point three million dollars in the foundational phase. So that's a forty-five dollars a square foot investment for all the envelope issues. Moats is full system replacement. All the items Mike mentioned on Mills Lawn would apply here. The cost per square foot is slightly different due to boilers, I believe, cost of the boiler. So a hundred twenty-seven dollars a square foot invested in a full systems upgrade to the middle school high school. Addition A, part one of four, the office. So if we go over to the drawings and look at addition A, the foundational proposal says we would just build the office area and the secure vestibule area in that foundational phase. So the square footage is just this portion. And then the square footage for the choir theater room, the storage space in between and the instrumental room are assigned to the second phase.
Does the office include the entire, that entire square of the secure vestibule?
It does.
Same with the grade school?
Yes. Yes. Renovation of the first floor at fifty dollars a square foot for eight hundred sixty-two thousand. The scope of this would be the full-on gut expansion and replacement of the restrooms on the first floor. So we'd be dealing with that issue kind of at both schools. And then also kind of reconstruction and reprogramming and finishing off this administrative area because we're moving some of the administrative components upfront. And it would just allow us to kind of complete all of that together. So that is, that is what I mean here by the fifty dollars square foot renovation of that first floor. And then also the targeted renovation would be on the second floor of the tower, adding the large group boys and girls and faculty restroom, again, in that foundational phase. Meaning these were, these were issues as we communicated with your staff or literally at the top of the list in terms of how the building's functioning. Site work allowance, we put up into this first phase because that addition for the office is going to approach on the vehicular drop off. So there's some dollars that are applied to that phase to reconstruct, realign that entry. And then over into the second phase of the high school, we have the balance of the abatement costs. This is the column where we demolish the shoebox. We demolish the band room. We do the priority three THP envelope items. And then we pick up the choir room, the instrumental room, the second floor storage area above that. And then also the storm shelter hardening. Because of this plan, we would envision the large choir and band room to serve as your hardened storm shelter for this building. The renovation on the first floor, which is everything in blue, I didn't just describe. In other words, everything except for the restroom renovation. So this would be things like the renovation of the kitchen, relocation of the French room. There's some revision about opening up this wall, make some garage doors, removable walls to renovate this whole area would be included in that piece. Kitchen equipment at a hundred ninety dollars a square foot is also added here. And then the tower renovation of the second floor and the third floor. So this would be the third floor in total. And this would be the second floor added beyond the restrooms that I mentioned previously. So fourteen point seven in that phase. Well, we see the grand total at the, at the high school, that's thirty million. At three hundred eighty-two dollars a square foot gives us a grand total of the fifty point six million for the full bill deal of everything on the drawing. So that completes kind of my overview of this and open it up to any questions.
Why don't we start out with long, why don't we do it high school?
Jay? So I saw the contingencies that were built into the THP numbers. And I'm curious, does that same ten percent apply to all aspects of these numbers?
Yes, so the way these are developed is these are envisioning total project cost per line item. So for example, the four hundred fifty dollars a square foot for the addition, line item five, would be your all-in number. Contingencies, owner's contingencies, A E Bs, soft costs, soil borings, building permits, everything. And that was important because we, if there's movement on numbers from column to column, we want you to have a full picture. So like, for example, the hard cost of the four hundred fifty dollars a square foot would only be about eighty percent of that. But the soft costs are close with it. So yes, all the contingencies are built in per line item.
Yep, thank you.
Mike, is one of those contingencies design?
Yes. Well, it's not a contingency. It's the architecture and engineering fees. Represent the majority of the soft costs associated with it. Yeah, so the four hundred fifty dollars a square foot would be sufficient funding to hire an architect and engineer and build it.
Jerry? I have just a couple. One is, two are for you. Would the electric be upgraded to four liter?
Yeah.
And then. Windows at Mills Lawn, one to three years out, just because they're. I was just confused about that.
One to three years out?
Meaning the second.
Why are we in the second?
The second phase.
Well, because I put them in that second phase because I assume in a renovation, they would be replaced. Not in the first twelve months, but they need to be replaced. They're, they're included.
Second question for you is in your full replacement costs, where I know you book it in these furnishes.
Yes.
Are any of these furnishings included in the targeted renovation sections? I know they're included in the renovation section, but I could not find any of these furnishings down.
I don't think so. You mean in terms of the student furniture?
Yes. Okay, two, two other, three other things, and they're general. So for Oakwood, and when you explained to Oakwood friend, Mike, you said it was bifurcated because that's how they chose to do it. They also were an Elk project and have credit. Is that, is that the reason they could bifurcate their project?
Yeah, so if you're an approved Elk district.
Correct.
And the O S F C agrees to allow you to keep your building.
Correct.
You can do a partial upgrade and get credit for the pieces you do.
So we don't know that.
We don't know that.
So clarification, and I just, I'm saying this not to challenge Mike, but just Mike and I have had this discussion before. I think it's important for everyone to understand that. As he was costing out, here's the renovation cost for Mills Lawn. Here would be what it would cost for a new building. And then you could get an Elk credit. In 2017, when the district explored Elk, they were able to get a credit because of enrollment size at each building. And at that time, Mills Lawn was three seventy-four and the middle school high school was three eighty-three. The threshold, I believe, is somewhere between, probably three fifty. So in the last project, in my conversations with our O C C consultant, she said because of our student enrollment and we had not crossed that threshold, that's why a single new K-12 was what they would co-fund. We do know that we still qualify. We now qualify for twenty-seven percent. I just don't want anyone to think that we would necessarily qualify for that twenty-seven percent if we built a new building here and a new building at Mills Lawn. That is all up to the O C C and there are waivers and we don't meet those requirements as it is. So I just want to make sure that no one leaves here and says, hey, there's a twenty-seven percent credit if we just build a new building, a new middle school high school. And then last question. Additional work for full renovation, whether it's Mills Lawn and middle school high school? Additional work for full renovation, whether it's Mills Lawn and middle school high school? When is that?
Say that question again.
When does that come after the foundational phase?
So this is...
And, and was the discussion, and I think this, I don't know if this came up at the Zoom meetings last week because I didn't get through all of the video, but is this part of a fully funded project that we're just phasing out? Or we're doing something that we won't be discussing phasing out?
Look, I mean, I could, the committee was asked to provide for the co-board, well, we were talking a permanent improvement plan now, then, and now we're talking a renovation plan at different price points, and that's what we're trying to provide to the committee.
Right, right, I understand that.
Correct.
But did these seem like...
Which means that, which means that some renovation plan may have more in it than other renovations.
These seem like not two separate renovation plans, but two parts of a whole. And that's a real difference, and I just want to understand that. Because I thought I heard Jay say, so I'm just trying to, to clarify. Is this, do you anticipate this to be a fully funded renovation that just then there's phase one of the actual work and then a phase two? Whereas phase one is funded, and then we go back and fund phase two?
Seems to me that it's a discussion for the school board as to what kind of plan with the community, of course.
So am I to look at this as two separate, I guess that's my question. Am I to look at this as two separate renovation plans? Or these are two parts of a whole?
The way I'm looking at it is there's two renovation plans here. However, they're not finished because we haven't talked about how many of the costs, which when you look at it in detail, there's a lot of questions about. So that, and then there's a question of how much would the community be comfortable with in terms of a bond levy? And then, once you've got that number, figuring out even what you can accomplish with that amount of money. That's the way I look at it. There's definitely, I sat down with the building folks on the committee last night to look over these numbers because it's pretty complicated. And there's a lot of questions, so I don't think these are the final numbers. But one question I have that I'd just like to ask right now is in the first report we got from Moats, the fire suppression system and the fire pump and pump control package, which is, you know, fairly expensive. You in your report recommended that we not do that and that we wouldn't necessarily need to do that. And we know Oakwood does not have a sprinkler system. They, they decided not to put a sprinkler system in. They were able to not put a sprinkler system in. They did some other improvements to their fire safety system, but you have a lot of data showing that things are quite safe without a sprinkler system. And so that's, so I was surprised to see that full price in here, and you had initially recommended we don't need to do that.
So if, if you do a renovation and it's not over a certain percentage of the value of the school, you can argue with the jurisdiction having authority that we don't want to do sprinklers. Now, they're going to say, well, we want to make sure there's e-brass, passive e-brass, et cetera, in the event of a fire that kids can get out and whatnot. But you can argue that. If you gut the whole building, they're not going to even talk to you about it. You're going to have to do it. So that was kind of where I was. Based on, you know, go back three months ago, four months ago, when we were talking about maintenance plan and what do you have to do and what, you know, what needs to happen? My recommendation was you don't need to have a sprinkler system. Building's been here for a long time. Very, very safe space at school in terms of fire. It's not a real risk. So, but jurisdictions having authority now, today, will force you to do it if you go over a certain dollar amount. Or if they're just blockheads and they want to fight you on it, so. And in terms of your furniture, we did go through that. And I have in my spreadsheet, it's about $550,000 for new furniture for the high school. All students, all chairs, and about 370, if you will, for the elementary school. And I, when I went to the recent OFC or whatever, that school board thing, they had a couple of $22. Yeah, price for me, so you're in the future.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I need to back out a moment to understand this. Who decided what was part of the foundational and what was part of the additional? Who, who had input on that?
I mean, I'm the one who put the budget together. So I authored this, and it was based on kind of a collective feeling about this entire process of what was core issues. Core issues from the beginning I heard were envelope, systems, safety and security, and we got to fix these bathrooms. Those were kind of the core issues that I heard, and I wanted to make sure the foundational plan addressed that. And then also to develop, my job isn't necessarily to tell you what to do, but to just give you the information. And I think there's a lot of work left here for the committee, the community, the board to start to try to prioritize what is important to do now and what could be deferred. For example, there are conversations ongoing about the shoebox. You know, and on this committee, there are very differing opinions on that, and vote valid. Some saying, hey, it's square footage we have. Why would we make that go away? We can use it for all kinds of things. And then others saying, hey, now is our chance to make that go away and replace it with a new classroom. So I tried to set this up to not make those decisions necessarily for you, but to give us hopefully a framework for that discussion to continue in the coming months. If that helps.
Okay, I guess there are something that don't quite line up for me because I see that the roofs, which I think you described as being in pretty bad shape.
In certain areas, yeah.
In certain areas, but also the design of the roofs is faulty.
There's, there's issues, yeah.
And so that you put in what would be a different plan of renovation according to you to this, right? So the roofs would not be addressed in the first one? I'm surprised by that. I'm surprised.
Some, some pieces of the roof are, the worst places, the worst conditions.
Yeah, so I guess this, this is my question, and I think we'll get there with that. So Mike was, one of the things, if we look at line four and line 20, the full system replacement, Mr. Richley pointed out that the high school, that full system includes a total roof replacement. But that is not part of the full system at the elementary because the elementary roof is not in the same condition as the high school roof, correct?
That's correct. And there was a debate about what kind of roof to go back. So as, just at a high level, the numbers here are general.
Yeah.
All right, because we don't, if you want to go back with a certain roof, it's $20 a square foot. If you want to go back with a really great roof, it's $50 a square foot. So we're trying to provide a reasonable number that will get you a good roof, but not maybe the best roof. In a good mechanical system, but maybe not the best. You understand?
Yes. So there, I mean, there may be parts of the Mills Lawn roofs that are being touched, but in this plan, there's not a full replacement of the Mills Lawn roof because it's not necessary at this time. Do you have an idea of the lifespan on that roof?
It depends on which roof, right?
Oh, the different sections?
Yes. And what we, one of the things we were going to do, when we talked on the phone, on our video chat, was we were going to get a roofing contractor to do some cores on your roofs in various locations to kind of identify what the roof structure, the system looks like, how bad is it? Is there water? And so we can say, you know what, this roof's great, it'll last another 15 years. We don't have to put it in a number here. This roof is shot, we have to do something. And by the way, this is the third layer, and so we have to tear it all off or the insulation's compressed, we have to tear it all off. So our, our numbers assume the worst. But there was, you know, we were going to camera, underground, pump piping, because there's a debate about whether or not the piping's bad or not, and what kind of pipe it is. And, and we don't have any records of anything, so we're making a guess based on what they did in 1950. We were going to look at the piping in the two-pipe hot water heating system to see if the pipe's acceptable condition, so we could go back with another hot water system, which would potentially save money. We are going to look at the electrical system because there's an argument about whether the, the old electrical gear could be used for another 20 years or 30 years or if it's, if it's done, right? And so those, those were being lined up, and so we were going to get some data.
So I, I guess for planning purposes, I guess I would say, you know, this does not include a full replacement of the elementary roof, but probably within 15 years.
Yeah.
And that would probably be ballpark, two million?
Well, there's ones, some sections that need to be replaced and would have to be replaced in this renovation. And I think there's one area that's what, 20, I don't want to say 2016, I don't know if it's that new, but there's one section that's relatively new.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You guys know how to be.
Well, I think that's, that's part of the, the doing the core sample thing. Because there's such a thing as a restoration of a roof as opposed to a complete tear-off and redo. And there's a lot of, there's several roofs, there are definite candidates for the restoration if it's doable, and that's where the core sample thing comes in. So what you do is you do a core sample, and the roofing manufacturer will tell you, yeah, we can restore this roof and then we do 20 years warranty on the restoration, which is cheaper than doing a complete tear-off. And it's conceivable that the main part of the 52 section is, would fall under that. But we won't know unless we do a core sample. So that's why we need to do core samples on each different section of the roof, like the conference rooms included in the 2002 section, which all of that should definitely be restorable. So there's, there's different, that's why a core sample for all the individual roofs is very important so that you know what you have. As, like we talked about the drains, you know, these numbers include salt cutting and replacing all of that stuff. Well, if we don't have to do that, then that changes these numbers for the better. But we don't know that unless we do the camera and shoot it in there. Electrical gear, you know, you get an electrical expert in there with infrared cameras, and they'll, they'll shoot it, and they'll, they'll look for hot spots, and they'll look at the gear and see, yes, you can get more years out of this or no, you can't. So a lot of the things that we need to know soon could affect these numbers greatly. And that's, that's why we were asking that these things be done so that we can make that informed decision.
Can I make another comment there? You were asking about replacing all the roofs or not. One of the things we don't want to do is to have all the roofs and all the HVAC changed in the same one or two years. Because if we do that, all the roofs will come up for replacement again in 20 years or 25 years. And then that's a huge amount of money in one bang, whereas if you have everything phased a little bit, it's going to spread your spend in 15, 20, 30 years.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I see the point in that, but also, at the same time, if you replace it all at once, you know where it's at, and you know predictably when it's all going to be, need to be replaced. Now, I would, I would totally disagree on HVAC because HVAC systems are all tied together and all the controls are tied together. And piecing together HVAC systems does not work well for large buildings. You'll have a piece that works and 90% of it that doesn't. I do see why with roofing and why that matters, but it's six and a half a dozen. It's not one system being better than another.
You have life in them, and you've actually paid for them. You've paid for this life that is still there, so there's no point in just going and getting rid of a good piece of roof.
We, we understood that some of the roofs were still under warranty.
I think there is one, one roof that's still under warranty.
We heard that one on the modular was under warranty, and is that the one you're thinking of?
I don't know.
Mills Lawn?
Mills Lawn's got an area?
I think, that was my understanding. I can't say definitively that that was my understanding.
So we would want to know these kinds of, this kind of renovation.
Can I ask a question? Kind of from more of a practical standpoint. So for these targeted renovations or targeted system improvements, I'm looking at the sixth grade classrooms, which is where I'll be. And I have a question from my coworker who teaches science. And, you know, typically in middle school science, you have a lab. So from what I heard, there wouldn't be really any new furniture for sixth grade. She was wondering if there was, like, if that would become a lab for her so that she could actually do labs with her sixth graders. So I guess my question is, kind of walk me through, what does a targeted system improvement look like? Like, what would that look like in those classrooms specifically?
That's the first column? Oh, that's...
Which classroom are you in?
So I'm not in, I'm in those classrooms yet. We're, technically, right now, we're up in the top left corner. But if we move, let's say that we are moving to these two classrooms, what would that look like?
So in, in the current budget spreadsheet, those are under the full, it would have full system improvements of new HVC, a new electrical, new lighting, new ceiling, but kind of everything you see and touch in the classroom would be the same. Now, that doesn't mean, and on every, furniture is a relatively inexpensive piece of the spy, and it doesn't mean, I'm not saying that you're not going to have new furniture because usually what happens in these processes are, he finds out he doesn't need to replace all plumbing lines, so all of a sudden we've got a budget that frees up that allows some other things to be added. So I, I don't want to stand here and say that you would not get new furniture in this plan if it was done. But right now, there, there's not a budget applied for new furniture there.
Are you talking about like a wet lab, like sinks and...
So she was thinking sinks tables, especially thinking about the kind of work she does with her sixth grader, so.
But the acid-resistant surface.
And even at that, so the current issue is having enough outlets to be able to plug in microscopes. So what would that look like? Would it be kind of a 21st century classroom?
We could look at that.
Yeah, if you can do without the sinks, it's relatively inexpensive. It's not a big jump to those kinds of things. If you're looking for sinks and gas and acid neutralizing plumbing, then it becomes more expensive.
We have more outlets if the foundational?
Yes.
We have more outlet and spending the...
Yes, all the, in the foundational, all the outlet, you would come up to code. You would have outlets out the losses. You'd have, you would determine where you wanted. You would have the, the teaching tools, like the projectors or the, you know, that kind of stuff.
In the foundational?
Yeah, would be, the power would be there, the infrastructure would be there. Maybe not the projector, but the power and the internet.
The hookups.
Not the tools, but the electric foundation to support it.
So we would still not have a smart class, but we would be prepared for it.
And Mike, you were not saying that the current receptacles are not to code. You're just saying that there's not enough of the quantity.
There's not enough, yeah, I'm not saying that they're electrically unsafe. I'm saying there's not enough.
I just want to throw out the list when we talked to Mike last Thursday on the Zoom call of things that we need more information on, really to, to be able to drill down these numbers and make them mean something relevant to what we need, which was the coring of the roofs, heating system pipes, which Mike, you said, depending on them and the condition of them, it would actually influence the kind of HVAC that you would be recommending. So we have, so this is, this price here isn't really attached to a particular system right now.
This price, it basically is whatever we need to do.
Right.
And if we have the infrastructure to do something else, it could be.
Right, and then we talked about camera, using the camera down the sewer, the stern sewer. We talked about the electric system needing a deeper inspection, discovering what the water pressure is at the street, the gas pressure. And I guess my question is, I kind of thought this was what you would be doing at that depth, and maybe I misunderstood what, you know?
Sure.
How much the maintenance plan advisor would do, but it seems to me you can't really have a maintenance plan unless you have this information, so.
Well, I don't, I don't have... Well, I don't I don't have a sewer machine with a camera and.
So you guys, so that's just.
That there's a specialized team that can do that, you know, and they have the equipment. Um, you have to be a licensed electrician to open up gear and especially if it's hot, so that's something that have to have, this electrical inspector. I mean, we looked at it all, we looked at it from the outside, but in in terms of how um how the system would, how long the system would last, you have to either de-energize it or open it up with an energizer that I need. Uh, and then the other.
I do have a question on, I know Jack had your. Okay, I have a question about that because if you're recommending a cold replacement of our electrical panels, what would you need to cover this?
Um, there's a disagreement on the committee as to.
To whether we need to.
They don't like my recommendations.
Okay, so there's a disagreement on the committee about whether or not we should go for eighty volt.
No, that's not as much a recommendation, it's it's whether the um the older primary gear can 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 be reused.
And reused, okay, and so that is why we, you wouldn't recommend an additional electrical inspection that cost that three thousand four hundred dollars, so I would concede we could retain the vintage panels, is that, am I?
It's not vintage, it's not vintage.
I mean, are you using the words?
If they were probably, he he thought they would use those words.
Okay, well, that's. Well, there's there's some parts that we know, we do have some pieces definitely.
Yeah, so the electric, so there's a lot of the old pushmatic electric panels, which is way away from the stuff that the that we're arguing. We're talking main switches, the big, big switches, and they get very little use, they last forever in a day, and normally they 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 just don't wear out, so why would we pay to change them?
Is there a point where an expert, where we can trust expert opinion?
Uh-huh. Well, there's more experts here than one, and then different experts.
I mean, the expert that we're paying for, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I feel like we went to great lengths to do an RFP, to hire somebody, but we, and so at some point, we have to say, we we are gonna trust the opinion of the professional employer. Because this could be a never ending, this could be a never ending.
So if you read the report, it says it was a visual inspection of those panels. So so like I said, they have not actually been opened up and checked to see what the condition is inside them.
And and opening them up and getting vandalized inspection, that's uh thirty-four hundred dollars.
And that was one estimate, I think, that we were presented with. That doesn't mean everyone was charged them.
Thirty-four hundred dollars.
Thirty-four hundred dollars, but if we're saving thousands and thousands of dollars in our electric system, it seems to me, I mean, part of the reason we put the building professionals on the committee was so that they could have a knowledgeable interchange with our consultants because uh school board members are not electricians, do not know about uh, you know, in-depth information about buildings and building systems. That's part of the reason these folks over here and over there, you know, were added to the committee. Um, and it's, it's not a question of distrust, I mean, I think there's, there, I'm sure there are different prof, different experts with different opinions on these things and we wanna get the best opinion and I think it's worth, if we don't spend this extra money, uh, which I, I mean, I, again, I thought the maintenance plan advisor would have this expertise because I don't know how you'd get to a maintenance plant without that level of information. But uh, but just to say, I I think it's appropriate that these guys who have had a lot of experience have questions that we would look into those questions.
Can I ask a quick?
If we get, if we get this inspection on the electrical, whatever, whether it's your guy or the guy, we should be able to come back with a, with a.
He's gonna, yes, he's gonna give you a.
Or replace them or they're okay for some period of time.
Correct.
And that period of time could be lengthy, correct? We're not just talking five years.
We'll be able to ask him over his question on that.
I see Jack.
Yeah, so I just wanna make a comment on that because I also think before we keep spending more money to keep checking, I think we should look holistically at the scope of our need um before we commit more money to investigating. So if we look at the whole scope of the entire project and it's an overwhelming amount, then do we continue to dump money into investigating? If we think that it's um comparable where this renovation process makes sense, then I think might be money well spent. My question is related to Mike. When we met, um, we talked about swing space and what this type of renovation would look like in terms of time, and you gave the fifteen month timeline, summer, school year with our students in a swing space of some sort, summer. If we phased this out in two parts, what does that do to this renovation timeline, swing space, destruction of the building?
Uh, I'm not recommending a two-phase approach.
So I'm not, so you're recommending.
I would recommend, I would recommend a one-phase approach. The question for the community, the board, facilities committee is, what's all in that phase? I I'm not recommending, you know, a twenty-five million dollar phase and then three years later you come through and do another twenty-five million dollar phase. I'm not recommending that.
A lot of that might have come from where we asked to get more, more divided up figures as well, and I think that really is where it came from because, because we had much bigger chunks with bigger prices on them, and we're like, whoa, you know, we've no idea of what we're talking about here, so that was your way of breaking it down.
Yes.
Yeah, so it was always looked at as one project, that was the way it was presented to us, and then, and then we were going like, how do you come up with this square, this price per square foot? How, like, where is this amount of renovation going? Where does that amount of renovation go? So that's how it actually got.
So in fact, if I'm following here, is either we're looking at a foundational plan or at the whole thing, is that?
No, I think you do the foundational plan and then you you can add pieces of the the other as much as you can come up with to um fall under the umbrella of whatever the community will support as far as with money. So the foundational plan is, I don't wanna say.
It may not even be a good term, although.
Yeah, I I, so you you wanna get as much as you can get for the money that you wanna put out. So that's, I'm, no, it's, it's, you can pick and choose out of all these things what you need to do, some things you can't, some things you have to do.
But to meet all of the needs that were outlined by the administrators and the teachers, then that would be the one of the right, right? That would be the total renovation, that's why we meet all of the needs that were discussed here.
These figures are still very, very much working numbers. I mean, when we were going through them the other night, some of them appeared to be a little bit on the high side, others maybe they were questionably low. I mean, they're, they're very, they're very, they're sort of guess limits, I suppose.
So I wanna pause, I wanna pause for my own understanding. I understood you to say that these were pretty accurate numbers, given your um calendar pin of November twenty-three, is that correct?
Yes.
So these aren't really guesses, these are pretty accurate numbers.
I know, I'm sure.
I wanna, I wanna again revisit my question about, is this a, is this two parts of a whole or is this two separate plans? And and I probably misunderstood you, Mike, at first because I thought you were recommending a bifurcated approach like Oakwood. No, Oakwood already has the money because they have the health credit, so it's not like they have to go back for as much. And and the reason I'm asking is this is very important when we talk about funding. So I just wanna, I wanna think about that. And then as I look at the second part, my disappointment is in, that is where all the educational adequacy concerns live. And so if I agree with what you say, Judith, that these are indeed professionals and I I know that and don't doubt that, I have professionals who are bringing something to the table and did when Mike went through his timeline, and that's what got us mainly to what's in part two. So at what point do we get to address really the educational adequacy? And the question, the larger question, which is probably one for the board and the community to answer, is, is that, do, are we seeing educational adequacy as secondary to other things? And it's not a question I can answer, it's a larger question. So I'm I'm just a little disappointed that that most of the educational changes that we sat with you on are really um pushed to either the second half of a whole or part two of of a, okay, two phases.
I have a question.
Just sorry. When I was saying that some of the figures are not quite there yet and we don't understand them. So for instance, in the high school gymnasium, um, so window and glass replacements, two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand. Don't think there's any windows in the gym.
Also the doors in the gym were.
And the doors, and then the doors, we've got two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand.
My, my guess is those are the windows and doors leading into the gymnasium and then, are there not? Windows and doors across.
He's got it separated by the, by the.
That's why we have questions.
We just have questions, so.
Yeah, I I'm just, you know.
Yeah. And there were other items like that, that's, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, like, I guess it's about labeling that entrance because obviously there's, like, tonight I came through the gym entrance and it probably those doors, but yeah, they're listing like forty of the new doors.
And then they, yeah, because then they list the other doors and windows separate.
I have a question, since we know in a, in terms of educational adequacy, we know a new build, the middle and high schools teachers will not have their own classrooms. So when we're thinking about the renovation, worse to name teachers and the middle and high school will have their own classrooms. So um because we already have that. So in terms of educational adequacy, um, if we're not having to build uh extra classrooms and Craig was gonna speak to the modular issue, modular, the shoebox or modular units here, um, but before he does that, I'm just gonna say, you know, we maybe wouldn't need that new construction if we, if we did what we, in our current location, what we're gonna do in a new build, which is the teachers are not gonna have their own classrooms, so they'll be sharing classrooms, so there'll be less classrooms, correct? Am I correct about that?
It's not, it's not really a like-for-like. I think there's a misunderstanding of this idea that teachers don't have their own classrooms in new builds. Sometimes teachers don't have their own classrooms and that's because there's a common space for teachers because the classrooms are either made larger or or designed to serve teaching and learning in ways that were not really thought of in nineteen fifty-two or nineteen fifty-seven. So it's not exactly a kind of a one-to-one, you can just take these classrooms away, I don't know, um, I'm clearly not explaining it well. It's just not a one-to-one and I think maybe the two educators here can probably.
Well, negating space utilization, so if we're gonna take, so let's say we take four classrooms offline during second period, I only have two classrooms available. So it's not something that I can just take rooms offline and fill them in and have teachers travel to other classrooms. Some periods I have that space, other periods I just don't. So I I don't think it's something that we can just demolish the shoeboxes and not replace those spaces that you didn't have the space. So when we look at total square footage from a design standpoint, we have a ton of hallways in this building, we have hallways in Mills Lawn, so in a new build, we can accomplish the same number of classrooms in one square footage through the design. So I think that's, I think that's an important piece too, and I, if if my understanding was right, the twenty-twenty-one bonds, that had every teacher having their own classroom. So I don't, I don't recall teachers not having their classroom built by.
I'd like to speak to that.
I, I don't recall that.
So I was requested in this process to do a comparison, square footage comparison of the um proposal, the addition renovation proposal to uh what theoretically could have gotten in the new K-12 plan. And this is, this is the the document that compares the two relative to classroom space. Okay, uh, the number of classrooms on on the right column, it says the September twenty version, which is essentially, essentially the same version. When you count up the number of classrooms, it's forty-three. And and my best guess that the number of classrooms we've gotten in a new K-12 would have been around twenty-nine. Uh, and that total building was a hundred and five thousand square feet versus a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. So there's, there's considerable less square footage and you can't say all of that square footage is just in corridors, there would be some classroom reduction. Now, the final, like, what you, the final number of classrooms you would have gotten would have needed been explored through a programming exercise. Um, if you wouldn't have done the second gym in a K-12, you could have picked up a much more classrooms, so there would have been some trade-off discussions that would need to occur. Uh, but there, there are differences between the renovation and a new in terms of kind of the size of what you're getting.
I think we should go through and look at the redundancies too because if we share a building, there, like, on the renovation plan, there will be redundancies versus one K-12, like, like Frank, really, um, we have, yeah, yeah, so the, I think that would be important and also looking at the spaces that are on this plan that are actually just dead space. I don't think that, when you're seeing it every single day, you see all of that dead space that is not able to be used for learning at all, it's just there. So I think that it would be, I don't know, I think it would be important for us to take a look at that and actually look at this square footage if people are really worried about it, to see how much of that is actually dead space and that is not being used for learning.
Well, if we have all this dead space, why are we adding, why are we adding new construction?
Because it's not, it's, so if you look at our end of the um building where our classrooms are, all of this space here, dead space. It can't become a classroom, it's not, I mean, we'd have to tear down walls if we wanted to do that, that would be more expensive. Um, if you look, let's see here, this isn't all classroom here where this library is right now, the way that this opens up right here, that's all dead space going to this corner, that's just, that's space that's not used. So I mean, I'm there every single day, I see the space that isn't used, that can't easily be configured to a new classroom because it's just in an awkward place because of all the times we've added on and building walls up and put, taking walls down. It's just not, I mean, if you ask any teacher in my area about all the dead space, they'll be able to tell you about that. It's not in our classrooms, it's outside of our classrooms.
Was that communicated to Mr. Richland?
I mean.
Well, I think part of the issue, because there used to be restrooms there on those, on the, are you talking about the landing, where entrances to all the classrooms are?
Yeah, so that whole space, I mean, there's a lot of dead space there. Those restrooms are not restrooms anymore, they're storage, which is a good thing, that's a positive thing. But if you're coming in where the steps are here, there's a wall there where the computer lab is, and that whole entire area is, like, there's a copier there, that's it. And some shelves and some like broken furniture and stuff, it's not usable space. And even at that, if we're trying to use it for kids, um, we can set them out there, but there's classes going on the library, so it's noisy, it's not really a quiet space if you wanna use it for small group space. See, that would be a great small group space if it had built-in walls and stuff, but it doesn't. So that's what I'm trying to get at, is that.
Yeah, it was built as a corridor, is what it was, that's how, when, when that whole thing was reconfigured way back when they made it into computer lab, I don't know what it is now, but it still is a computer lab. But they put up, we put up temporarily, temporary walls, semi-permanent walls to break it up so that kids could access their classrooms in the morning. So it's a hallway is what it, what it was meant to be originally. Um, if this extended corridor is put on, then it will become a hallway again. Um, and, you know, obviously you, with the, if that's in deep renovation, that could be a solid wall all the way up as as opposed to major.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate Mike's spreadsheet, but I just wanna, possibly, he estimated a number of classrooms because when you go through a project, you do have to do a whole series of exercises. We never got that far, right? And there is a give and take to those spaces. But when I say educational adequacy, it's more than square footage. And and we talked about Oakwood and and it was a, I'm glad I went on that visit, but we also went to Green. And so when I hear educational adequacy, I see a section of a building that has maybe three first grade classrooms and all of the. And all of the doors have glass in it. And the, the space in front has a graduated stage for performances. They have a media center that is distributed throughout the whole building. So there is a corresponding, what I would call a little body. There are, there's embedded technology in the classroom. That's what I think of also when I, when I say educational adequacy, not just square footage.
I'm just wondering if we should hear, I think we need to think about next steps on the renovation, on the renovation plan that we are going to complete. So I'm wondering though if we want to let the citizens speak a bit here and then come back here and kind of think about next steps.
George, I think you were going to speak. Get a comment.
Yeah, I did. I wanted to talk about, I wanted to echo some things that are important to me as a parent too. Is that like, Harry has pointed out, all the floor plan changes that we want to see for a twenty-first century teaching is put back to the second plan, right? And that's something that I think is really impactful to our children, right? Right now, we have moved, since the fifties, we have moved into a student-centered learning. And usually that involves having a space for small group that is in eyesight of the teachers. Now, I got that, I think that's the, that was the takeaway that I got from the Ohio School Board Association meeting is that we saw different renovation plans, we saw different new builds, and the difference between a renovation and a new build is that we had a student-centered learning in the new build, in a way that is difficult to make it happen here. So a square footage, a square footage is not equal everywhere in the building. If we want to have small group spaces, which I understand your plan is that it's pushed back to the second plan, it would have to be within eyesight of the teachers. And with all the corridors and hallways that we have, we really don't have that here. Unless we get to the total renovation plan of the additional that reworks the floor plan. And so it is problematic to me if we're looking at a foundational plan that doesn't include a floor plan rework. It's really limiting what our teachers can do. It's really limiting the experience that our kids can have. Because we do want them, especially after COVID, we want them to have experience of doing small work, small group work. And I'm not sure that we would get there without a big discussion about the floor plan. So I don't want, I don't want us to come out of this meeting and think that systems are the answers and the floor plan is not because it's really both here.
Citizens, I have a question regarding the electric. When you were discussing that certain things aren't good to piece together like HVAC. When we talk about getting another estimate on electric work, how does electric fit into that? Is it, is it easy to piece together or is that something that generally is going to work best to go in and do the full system?
Well, generally, if the primary gear, which is the electrical gear, just past the transformer, right, utility Duke or whoever your utility is, the transformer wires run into the building and there's a large primary piece of electrical gear that may or may not have a transformer in it, that pushes the electricity then to secondary and distribution gear. That first piece is large enough in terms of capacity and modern enough that it is very easy to expand, right? You have to have capacity. You have to have enough amps to distribute. And then you have to be able to connect. But all electrical gear is generally interoperative. So if it's made by Siemens or Square D or whoever it is, the code requires that they all play together. Now, there are some exceptions, but by and large. Now, in this case, you have, I won't say the word vintage, but you have an older piece of primary gear that is limited in its size. There's a, there's a capacity rating plate. That's all you're allowed to connect to it. You can't over-connect. And there's, there's a code and there's math you do to determine how much you can connect. And that's what you have. So again, our estimation that that gear is too old and inadequate size-wise, but there's a professional disagreement and I'm trying not to be defensive. And I'm okay with that. Every, every project.
No, I'm just trying to look at the big picture.
There's people that disagree that are equally capable of doing.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Cindy. So around this issue.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Cindy Seck, president here for a long time. So I hear this issue of, you know, that the space is more than just the, you know, educational experience is part of the space. I'm wondering with the OFCC plan, which as I understand it, they allot us a hundred and five square feet based on the number of students we have.
A hundred and five thousand.
A hundred and five thousand square feet, right. That's an important number. So will we see a floor plan? Will we see plans like this? If we go with a new build so that we can make that same comparison and know that we have those same considerations that can fit in a hundred and five square feet?
Hundred and five thousand square feet.
Yes, but anyway, will we see with an OFCC endorsed build, will we see floor plans? We didn't last time. We did with the very first levy. So will we see a floor plan that allows us to make, to answer the kinds of questions that you're raising now?
I can take part in it. Do you want to?
I guess I, I'm going to try to rephrase your question. Would you see a floor plan before eleven? Is your question with an OFCC project. That is that your question? At least she wants to compare it with this.
Yeah, I mean, if I were deciding on what levies to offer, I would want to know, right? That I would want to know.
Your options.
My options. I would want to know which ones address the kind of needs that Caneta is raising. For sure.
Can I respond? In the very first levy attempt, when we had a renovation and expansion plan for just this building, the way they did the rings for seven and eight and then ten and twelve and nine and eleven was a larger open space in between each wall of classrooms, teacher workroom, so that we had the space close to what we're doing. And it did look like what we were talking about now, which is a different structure of not just a hallway with classrooms flanking it, you know, a six-foot hallway. It was that open space where there were tables in the courtyard between two walls of classrooms where there can be that small group space that is visible from the classroom teacher. And yeah, the first set of drawings Mike literally did for that first levy. As a teacher that works in the building, it, it looked very pleasant, you know. It looked like it checked a lot of boxes, so.
Right. That was not condensing.
There are a couple of differences. If you'll hear correctly if I'm wrong. In twenty-seventeen, it was not a, twenty-eighteen, what it was on the ballot, it was not an health project. So Mike did drawings that were, I'm not going to say high detail, but some detail. When you become an OFCC project, you are given, based upon your enrollment, a whole set of, I'm going to say criteria that, square footage criteria based upon your enrollment. So all of these from twenty-seventeen on, it's all on the website. So having gone through this experience that went towards, I can tell you that we did not have drawings to take to the public for a ballot issue. We did know that we were going to go from six buildings to two. So there might have been some broad brush, like exterior buildings, but the whole footprint, what the classrooms look like, after you have an approved project and the voters approve it, then there's a whole series, months, maybe even a year long, of community meetings and, and as Mike said, you know, you, you have these programming meetings and there's the Ohio School Design Manual, which is available online, that really dictates a lot of what's required in each type of space. Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, does it, I mean, no. Are you saying, no, we will not see drawings?
I'm saying you are not going to see a complete floor, floor plan for a valid issue, for a new project.
Okay, then that does answer my question.
The whole report, like we've seen before, that lists square footage, that lists square footage by area, et cetera. You know, Mike does this for a living. He might have something else to add, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're, you're generally correct. The challenge with the USMC process is they co-select the architect after the bond issue passes. So if you're doing a lot of design work with a pre-bond architect, it's, you're taking some risks by doing that.
Which is why you generally don't have plans. Because any project that big has to go out to bid. And that's, that's.
Yeah, I would just say that the OFCC, you know, they're offering this money, but it, but it comes with red tape. There's a set of rules. You got to play by their rules. And part of that is that, like I said, when you go out to bid, it's square footage numbers. But right, there's, there's no drawing of a building, there's, which does make it very difficult as far as, okay, like, I have nothing to see. I'm just voting on square footage and numbers. But that's their process.
But in general, you can, you're told, hey, if you want this, if you want a two-hundred-seat auditorium, it's not fitting in this project. So you know those things. I guess the beauty of a project like that is that you get to, as a community, students, teachers, parents, you get to co-create what that building looks like, what that floor plan looks like, what's important to the community. Perhaps it's more important to the community to have a black box theater than a second gym. Those are type, types of decisions that you can make because you, you just have to fit it in.
Yeah, and I would just say, if you, if you want an idea of what an OFCC project would look like, then the best thing you could do is go to buildings that are recent, that are OFCC projects, that are new builds. And that's the best way to get an idea of what would an OFCC project look like here. Because those design features happen in the process. You have to have the money before you start going that way.
But, but there are restrictions, right?
There are, right, there are certain things that if you want, they're not included. Those are, those are LFIs.
Locally funded.
Locally funded initiatives. So like, you can include them in your project, but.
What did you say?
Oh, I was just, the kind of restrictions that Caneta was, they're not restrictions, but the kind of changes that you were talking about. Those are not included in restrictions. They don't, do they go at that level? Maybe this is, maybe I'm getting to.
No, I, I'm sorry, Cindy, I'm trying, I'm trying to answer the question. There are, let me give you one example. We'll fund a stage but not seats, right? Why is that? Students don't use the seats. Adults use the seats. Students do use the stage. So that's the type of thing, but it's all spelled out. I mean, so, and I'm not going to talk too much.
I think we're talking about renovation.
So my name is Ashley Fulkrith. I spoke at the last board meeting. I have two students at Mills Lawn and I'm also the fifth grade teacher who currently occupies the flex space that's on that map right now. My concern about not doing deep renovations is my classroom needs it. It's blatantly true. See the little box that's by the flex space? That's currently a girls' bathroom that has a faux door that used to work, but they've kind of locked it off, sort of. But I can hear children going to the bathroom in the middle of my class because it has no soundproofing. When we do map testing, district testing, I have to close that bathroom because the flushing of the toilet is so loud. So the fact that that's not being renovated bothers me because I'm in that space. Or the fact that it is December, I don't even know. I had to have my windows open today because it was literally eighty-five degrees in my classroom. Eighty-five degrees. Because the heat is so much. And my kids were complaining that it was so hot in my room. I have children that play sports and they said, we went to Green Inn today. And I was like, you did? And they're like, why can't we have that? I don't know. I had kids at recess today on block top only and the smell coming from the cafeteria, which is natural gas, whatever it is, why does it stink? I don't know. When are they going to fix it? I don't know. Let's talk about the space between the four and the flex. That is currently on the top in IS's room, which is probably not that big most of the time. Most people probably have a bathroom that size. That's where our children go to get special services. They're sent to the top of the stairs in a room where the windows are at knee level and kind of hidden away. We don't, you know, we're going to shut that door. Underneath her is another space which leaks when it rains to the point where there's a couple inches of water. And that's where our mental health counselors, our OT kids, speech, go to sit. So that space to me is not usual. I don't even, I just don't even understand. So if you really want to know, like, the experts, talk to the teachers. Like she said, we're there every day. I'm with my kids every day. My argument is not for me. I'm adult. I can go with the best of them, go with the flow, whatever. My kids deserve better. They really do. Our students, my own children. What am I breathing every day? I have this like filter thingy that I have to keep plugged in and running constantly. Because if I don't, my room smells like a toilet. So tell me, when you go to an office and you're at work, do you have to hear people going to the bathroom? Do you have to smell people going to the bathroom? Do you have to have event running constantly to get that smell out of your classroom? I see these numbers and that's great, but all I think about is my students. All I think about are my kids. Those are not numbers to me. Those are my kids. They don't have a voice and that's really concerning for me. It's very, very concerning. This is scary as a teacher to talk in front of the public. But if I can't fight for my kids, what's the point? So we need to really think about flex, that's fifth grade children. That is not flex. That is fifth grade kids.
Since we don't have a complete renovation plan yet, I think it's good for us to hear about the concerns.
And you can always come and like, some people like, to me, like, seeing it when it's being used with the students.
Nobody questions what you're saying about these things and what can be done about it, I think, needs to be looked into. But I think, like I said, we're not actually done with the renovation plan yet, so we don't actually know exactly what will be involved. Knowing that there's that need there means that we need to address it. That's the way I see it. And so we need to figure out how to do that. But we got to get these numbers in better shape before we know what kind of money we actually have. And we didn't say twenty-five million is the baseline numbers that need to be worked. But that's not necessarily where we end. Then you have, then we're going to have to have a conversation at the school board, the way I see it, or maybe we're going to decide as a committee, we're going to, some things are essential. We're going to have to add on.
Okay.
And so that's, that's kind of the way.
I've worked in new buildings. Like, my previous district was brand, like, I worked in a building that was a hundred years old and made brand. Brand-new OFCC building. Brand-new, okay? And we talk about the flex space and the teachers not having classrooms. That was actually dictated by the principal. We had the space, but the principal thought, well, you know what, these two ELA classes would work really well in side-by-side. Our walls opened up, garage doors went up, and we could have this flexible space for our kids to learn and grow. Our small group room, like Dorothy said, was in eye shot so they could go work. They had couches. They had all these beautiful things for our kids to learn. And so if you want to know all that stuff, I did it for seven years. Like, again, we have the experts in our buildings too. I may not be an expert on mechanical stuff, but when it comes to education, I know what I'm doing. I promise that they wouldn't have hired me if I didn't. So that's all I can say.
Me or, is it me? Hi. I'm Eunice Brevic. I'm a parent of several kids in the district. I'm also an educator, but not in this district. When I think about this and I'm looking at the numbers, I mean, given all that we've been talking about, if somebody came and told me four walls, here's your price to insulate four walls. That's an expert opinion. I think we can trust that expert. That's fantastic. Another expert might be able to come in and say, only one wall needs insulation replaced. Yet that cost that the first expert gave you is going to go down dramatically if only one of those walls needs insulation. I think the community has spoken twice and we owe it to them, whether we're happy, disappointed, angry, whatever emotion came up based on the levy, people have said, we're only willing to dish out so much money. And my understanding that this committee's charge is to get an accurate sense of the numbers involved so they can go to the committee and ask for money. And I think some things, like we were talking about the roof, for example, we really won't know unless you take those core samples. There's several things that need to be dished out. Like, the numbers that are up there are expert numbers and that's great. But those expert numbers might shift based on what's necessary. So I think there seems like there's a little bit more information that needs to be gathered before we could go back to the community and the voters and say, here's, here's the deal. Because I think if you go up there and you tell them fifty million dollars to renovate, that could really set off a storm of misinformation and be misleading in terms of what's absolutely necessary. And I, and I agree with everything that people have said in terms of wanting a. And I agree with everything that people have said in terms of wanting a space that is beautiful for our kids, and they deserve wonderful things. But I think we still need a little bit more.
Can I make a comment back to that? And I see you back there, sitting there, but one of the big advantages, and I'm not saying it'll happen at all, but one of the big advantages of the renovation is, is that we have X number of dollars to do it after a levy's passed, whatever that amount is. And if you look at the previous big builds in the village, we had the fire station, went way over budget. By the time they got the levy, they got a design, they started building, they were, I think, a million over budget, so about, about 20%. That's huge. Then we had the water treatment plant, that went way over. That's why the water's so expensive. My understanding is one of the schools in Fairborn, same thing. They've, they haven't finished the school, they're out of money. And I think you mentioned to me one day a while back, that there are other projects like that. So if we had actually gone ahead and passed the first levy, we might actually have a school two-thirds, three-quarters built that we do not have the money to finish out. One of the big pluses that I see on doing a rehab is, is that if, if the cost of construction went way high, and we've no idea what it's gonna do, but I mean, it has been nuts crazy for the last couple of years, we at least wouldn't get left with a three-quarter built building out here, no money to finish, and still have two buildings that we have to upkeep. So, I don't know, that would just be one of my feelings on it. But you're right, these figures could go anywhere. We really wanna try and get them nailed down so we can see what, how much can we do for the limited, probably limited money that, you know, the village is prepared to, or can come up with. I mean, when you look at Oakwood, a very, you know, exclusive area in town, and they had to sort of struggle to get 18 million, we're talking way more. And we're a small village.
I'm gonna, gonna add on there, renovations can go over budget, too.
Which means that.
Which means that when some of those projects, part of the renovation goes over budget, then some of those other items get cut from the list.
Yeah, but at least you've still got a school that you can go to.
I mean, not a fifth project isn't finished. If our kids are out of building and we can't finish it, then.
Okay, so I guess my point is, I'm a mother, and I work for school at Mills Lawn. So we're not gonna get, if we don't wanna nub those, what is your timeline, I'm telling us when we can get the renovation money? While you're pushing numbers around and we're going all nitpicky, I've got warm stuff coming from the ceiling at Mills Lawn. I've got the teachers lounge where they can't plug in a coffee maker and a microwave to make their lunch and get their drink at lunchtime because it'll run, it'll blow the electric. So we're talking, and talking, and I'm talking, and everybody, the kids are suffering. We're suffering in the buildings because you wanna nipip on the line items, and we need to make a decision. So when is your, when is your time that you're gonna say, this is the money that, I agree on that, this is what we're gonna put to the table?
The school board is gonna make that decision. It will be, we're hoping to make it by May so that we can put something on the levy in, on a, in the fall that it will come on.
I hope so, because I came to this community because it valued education, I decided to live here, and all the levies that my kids have been in school have not passed. So my kids, like, go to sports, and they're like, why do we have it? My teenage boys are like, the shoebox is gross. Teenage boys are gross. They know the shoebox is gross. It's gross. I have, my youngest wants to leave the school. He's like, why can't we just move? I don't wanna be here anymore. So that's what's happening to our kids. That's who this building, these buildings are for.
But the buildings are for the kids. Not, not you guys, for the kids.
Me? What's your name? Liz, my name's Liz. I just had a question about, like, we had met, we had talked about the foundational renovation versus the additional work, and whether or not that's the right way, thing to call it or what. But how, like, how are we deciding that? And I think Dorothy's point earlier about, like, how were those decided? Because why are we breaking it into two? If this is the renovation that is needed, the total amount of cost, like, why even break it up? Because I think if we're gonna, like, show the public what exactly we need, it's a little, it, I think it's, you can't call something foundational without, you know, the perception from the public that, oh, well, that's, that's gonna make things, right? Well, not necessarily, because we can't, you know, do the storm shelter properly until phase two. So that actually would have, if we're only doing one, that would have to be in the foundational, right? If that was part of, like, a requirement or something, or the hazardous abatement. Can't break that into two separate things if we're not doing both of them, right? Or, he's shaking his head, is that not true, or?
No, no, we just talked about that a couple of minutes ago, and it's just the way they broke it down, because we asked for more detailed figures.
But why into, like, two separate?
They just divided it up that way. But it, but it, but it was never discussed by any of us as two construction projects.
I think maybe it's helpful to think of it as, like, high priority and extra. And I have disagreements about what should be in the high priority, and maybe we all do, but I think that's what I'm seeing it. This is like the must-do, and this is the other. And I think a lot of the other needs to move into the must-do, but that's my opinion, and that's the conversation.
Could you, I'm sorry, you didn't say your name.
Sorry, I'm Naomi, a bunch of arms.
And I'm Rebecca Potter, and I have two daughters who graduated, class of 20, class of 22, doing well. So I have just a few things to point out, and I am coming here with the real hope to pass a levy in the fall, and understanding, having my two daughters go through, and we've heard it from the teachers, how, yeah, we need a new, we need to fix these problems, we need to, to address the schools. I am worried about two things that I don't think are getting enough attention. The first is, is that in the first levy, there was really only one thing that I saw that people agreed on, and it was to keep two schools. And in the second levy attempt, I found more people objecting to the single school idea than the cost. Of course, both were a strong concern, but in terms of what people were saying, what my neighbors were saying, signs on their lawns, I, I just, I teach rhetoric and sustainability, and we're trying to figure out, how do you shift opinion? I'm very concerned that unless that's addressed very aggressively, this will be a hard sell to the community. Especially because we also are aware of the demographics, so we are not a growing school. In fact, we're hearing a lot of messaging about our housing costs, aging population, et cetera. And we know that that's gonna be a harder constituency to get to vote for a school levy. So please understand that we're, as I think Terry said, we're not comparing apples to apples, and that a two-school plan is not gonna be looked at as the same as a K-12 plan, especially as Cindy indicated, we can't see it, right? We, and that's not what we know, it's not what we've experienced. I'll try to get out to Greenin, but most of us don't know it. We also know enough about the state to know that with a small school, we might not get half of what we hope for. And so this is my question to Mr. Richly, is it at all possible to renovate the two schools and give the teachers what they want for 50 million or less? Is, do you think that could happen?
That's what I presented.
Okay, so that can happen, that's a great place to start. And I really, and I really hope that we do see this as a great first step. Thank you. Thank you, especially to the building experts who are volunteering their time. Thank you so much. This community is full of experts, and I would agree with many that Mr. Motts, you did it, or Motts.
Engineering.
Engineering, sorry.
Mike Murdaugh.
Sorry, Mr. Murdaugh.
Don't worry.
You did it, you've given us a great start. As a taxpayer for 30,000, I'd like to see more detail included in that price, like the core, and testing the pipes, and the electrical. If it's not included in the price, I encourage you all to do it, because, for example, I look at a $28,000 water heater, the village is gonna look at a $28,000 water heater, and they're going to start to already dig in their heels and say, this isn't an honest effort. So I'm throwing.
It's multiple water heaters, pumps and pipe, et cetera.
Yeah.
Industrial.
So it, and if, if that detail is shown, right, then you can have some experts come in and say, well, tankless water heaters will probably get you what you want, and you won't have the energy cost to fund it. So these are the kinds of conversations that this community needs to have to get the buy-in. Listen to the teachers, make sure we get you what you want, and maybe it's more than 25 million. But also listen to the community and our building experts. Try as hard as we can to get as accurate numbers as possible, and work collectively towards a decision. I feel that a really good renovated school will win a levy. I'm just not so confident about the other option.
Can I, can I speak to that? Yep, I'll just take a second. So thank you, Rebecca. You know, when I first came, I think there's some, not I think, I know there's this belief in the community that I go to bed at night thinking about a new school, and that's my plan. When I came in, I was given the directive to address facilities, and I was told, cost is the issue. The most economical plan was a new building because of that credit, right? Do I think two campuses fully renovated, or is that, I don't wanna make that descriptive, two campuses fully renovated would give us what we need? And, and maybe a little more than a new building because of the square footage? Yes, but then I have to step back and think, if cost is the issue, now we have a $50 million project with no help credit. And I say that, saying, and Jane, I had this very conversation this afternoon. You know, if I could call the OFCC and say, hey, you know, we're special, give us a waiver to do this, I'm willing to do that. I don't think they're willing to move because they come at it with, with cost in mind, right? And so given that student enrollment, a single building is what they recommend. And they fund single buildings of 1,200, 1,300, 1,500 kids. So it's not like we're anywhere near the edge. So I get it, because I do, I now know that cost, I don't think was the issue. It is an issue, but I don't think it was the issue. So I say that to say, thank you for your comments, I don't know where this puts us, but I think it's, it's an important community conversation. What we all know is that our facilities need addressed, and they don't just need a bonus.
I have a question, actually, really quick, just to pose to the community, it doesn't need to be answered right now. But if teachers support a K-12 building, and you're saying you wanna support teachers, if the teachers look at both of these plans and say, we prefer the new build, would you support the teachers in that? Or would you prefer to go with what you want as, as a community member who doesn't work in the building? That's a question, because I very specifically remember writing out letters with my fellow union members about supporting the levy. And so that's kind of, kind of going back to the idea of we're supporting what our teachers want. That's the question that I do have. And then also, if we're going back to the plan, I'll be very honest, our teachers did put in input for these buildings, but it was kind of, it wasn't like, this is our first option, or this is our first choice. So I just wanna let people know that, that even with these renovations, even with these additions, I think that if you ask teachers what their ideal classroom looked like, it wouldn't look like what's in here. I'm just being very honest, and I felt like that needed to be said. I know other people back there have mentioned that. That's just what I'm, I wanted to say, so.
Can I just make a reply to a comment you made about the 30,000 paid to Motts Engineering? That actually was something that we asked for, because we'd all spent ages going through it, looking at it, but we couldn't get a, we couldn't get a total focus onto it. And the only way we could do it was to get someone like them to come and actually give us this breakdown, whether it's slightly high or slightly low, that's sort of immaterial, really. It was to, we had to reduce it, or we had to spend months and months before we ever could even vaguely get to this sort of money. So, so this really has been super helpful, and, and it's, and it's brought, it's given us all something to chew on and to sort of whittle on and see where we can go from. But no, I mean, maybe it'd be nice if we got a little more info or something, but really, it, it has been a big help to everyone here.
Thanks for that clarification. Seems, and it might be worthwhile to get the additional information that you need.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost quarter to nine, and we need to think about next steps, so that we can leave this meeting, knowing the work we have to do. But if people wanna give a one-minute comment. Laura was first, and then maybe Dino, and then you. One minute.
Village resident, child graduated from here, and I'm a former teacher. And I, first of all, thank you for all your hard work. I would vote for this renovation, 50 million in a minute. I've been running some numbers here, and there is numbers, this community has said twice, we don't like that number, we're not willing to give you that money. I think you should do a focus group with different constituencies and say, just, what can you afford? If we're gonna raise your taxes next year, and for many years, it would be 500 a year, 1,000, just for me personally running these numbers, based on what the auditor says, my property's worth not, about $1,500. So that's kind of shocking to people who have to vote for this levy. So just keep that in mind. If I could, I'd give it to you. But I think, and I also think the community's said we want two campuses. Thank you.
Dino, a lot of, just a quick question about, when it comes down to, you've talked about the numbers, we really need to get the hard numbers, about when it comes time, there's gonna be a 15-month, which you probably know is gonna run, run a little bit longer, where you're gonna locate the kids, how much is that gonna be? How much is it gonna take? The bus drivers, the diesel, all that, all those inclusive numbers, because that's another added fee that we don't know, that we would like to know with the renovations that are going on. So that's something that you would probably like to look a little more in depth on.
I actually have a. Gary, Gary Siremski. A very quick question, believe it or not. If the two, if the two-school approach, the renovation we've been talking about, if it comes in short of what the state considers qualifies, or a, you know, the 27% or whatever, what's the threshold that we're short on? Is it enrollment in each of the building?
It's enrollment, and they, they take a historical look, so anytime you're in an OFCC project, they do enrollment projections, and our last ones are online, and they go by building and then by district.
Okay, so, so.
So we couldn't, like, grab 50 kids.
Yeah, so, but, but what would it need to be at in order to qualify for the state money, and what are we projecting we will likely be at?
So we qualify for state money for a single K-12.
Right, right.
27%.
Okay, but, but no, for two schools, though.
So here's, they have two thresholds. So one is enrollment. So it's, I'm gonna say between 350 and 375.
350.
Let's say 350, okay? Unless your building enrollment is 350, they will not fund that. That's, that's piece one. The second piece is what they call the renovate-to-replace ratio. Feel free to step in correctly. So when that is high, it is over a certain percentage, they, it's their opinion that it is much less expensive to replace than renovate. And so we have those two things working against us. Because our renovate-to-replace ratio is quite high. And if you go on the website and look at our old, old last year OFCC documents, it will say the ratios right on the.
First, yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think we should end shortly, so I'd like to skip next steps, that we work these numbers, and that we have another to call, if you might, the community. And if you want, I, and we can only have seven people at a time talking to these guys, so we're gonna have to break down if everybody in the committee wants to speak to them, or any people pass, if the numbers pass.
if the numbers pass up.
And during those meetings, is that what we would make a point about what should be in the foundational or the alternate? When are we discussing what is left now?
Um, well, I think, I think we should, we can have, we said we would have different price points, so we can have, the foundational was supposed to cover all needs.
It doesn't include all the roofs.
I know, I'm not sure why that is, because I thought it, but, and I think it should, those numbers aren't that. But we don't have, we don't have for example, so we don't know what there's a cost, so there's that problem.
I, I mean, I, I feel very comfortable with the numbers presented today from Oats and Richly. I understand that to narrow things down, that there's more investigative cost. The board agreed to spend the 50,000 that we've done so far to get here. If you want to narrow it down and, and get more answers than if you, we're asking for more investment. And I think if we're going to ask for more investment.
Should we go to the school board?
We should ask the board, how much more they want to invest in this process, because there's a lot of information here that can be used to present to the board and, and for the board to make a decision. I know that the community has, has differences of opinions, but I, I think that we have pretty good numbers here, we have a pretty good idea. Do we want to keep investigating this? Is cost the number one issue? Is two schools the number one issue? I, I think that there's a lot of people that have differences of opinions on that. So I, I think there might be, those questions, I think, are bigger than, than perhaps, you know, the details of how much of the roof needs to be replaced. It's, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to knock these numbers in half. It's just, it, it's going to slightly narrow things. So when, you know, if we decide to pursue this further, then that's when I think we should invest this cost. But I think we should go to the board, do we want to invest more cost into this process, or, or do we just want to try to narrow this down a little?
Why don't we, at the next meeting, talk about what should be in what we think of the foundational? I, I agree, I think all rooms, but we, again, I personally don't feel we're going to have good enough numbers to really be able to say to the community this is totally true. So I would like to see that at school board. But we're going to ask the school board, this community does not have the authority to, you know, spend more money, so we'll bring it to the school board. Scott, did I see your finger?
You did. I, I, my two cents worth, and that's exactly what it's worth, is that I completely agree that we do need to get more, we've got to drill down on some of these costs. However, I want to say that time is money, the clock is ticking, and especially in times of inflation and rising construction costs, we cannot afford to drag this out and be subject to analysis paralysis, or the, the cost will far outstrip any, any savings we're going to make by digging into this and looking at where we can save, you know, 50 or 100,000 dollars. It's not that we shouldn't save those, those amounts, but we owe it to this community to get something done and, and get it, and get it out there. And if, if there's more that we can do, the board needs to tell us what it, what do they need to make this decision? What will they accept?
To put things in perspective, we all realize that something needs to be done sooner rather than later. So, so everyone understands the earliest possibility to put, put a, something on, out for a vote is November of next year. And if I'm not mistaken, we have until June to get that on the ballot?
It depends, it, it depends. So there's some.
Yeah.
Ballot deadlines depending upon what we're going to put on the ballot. So I think you're in the general area, but it, it just, we're happy to share that they may even be up on the website.
Okay, so, let's, let's just say we have until June to make a decision on what we're going to put on the ballot. We also need to realize there are three, there are three different parts to this. One is that the board could decide to do a foundational program, and let's say it's 25 million dollars. That can be accomplished probably within a couple of years after the levy has passed. If we decide to do the, the full renovation, that could probably be done within three or four years after the levy has passed. If the decision is made to go to a new school, nothing gets done, because we're not going to put money, we're not going to throw good money after bad money in, in working, doing significant work on the existing schools, and a new school won't be available for five years. That's just a time perspective that people need to get their, get their heads around.
It's about three. It's about three. That's not a great example.
No, we have to wait for the levy, for the year of design, you got to go out for bid, and then you got to construct the project. Four years from today. Four years from today, okay.
Three years from now.
But are we all in agreement, are we in agreement that the foundational and the additional work will happen before a new school could happen, before a new school is ready?
Would we be looking at one levy? Or are we looking at?
One levy.
And that would cover one, phase one and two?
Whatever the board decides to do, if they want to go foundational for a lesser amount, or the whole, it's the whole enchilada.
So we're in the middle?
For the big amount.
Wow, okay. Okay, is there anything further to, so I think the next, I'm not sure what to do about, I think we should look at some other, if there's other things that need to be added, I agree, all the roofs need to be addressed one way or another as part of the foundational plan.
What about the educational adequacy, the floor plan?
Well, like I said, I mean, we know Oakwood is working out of a 1920 building, and they've got, they're doing very well. So I'm saying, I'm just saying, it will depend on, you know, cost and what people think is essential.
Can we just acknowledge that we're not Oakwood, though? We're not Oakwood.
Nobody said we were. I'm just saying, they, they're working on a, I know it's, basically.
They, they're, they're very different than we are, so educationally, I think we can.
Okay. All right, I think we should go ahead and go with me, and thank you, everybody who stayed and most participated, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.